Good evening. It is seven o'clock. It's June twenty-third, regular council meeting. I'd like to call to order with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
The president of council, Terry Reeves, is not in attendance tonight. Counsel, does anybody have any objections with the former president of council, Steve Horniac, taking the chair? Hearing none. Mr. Horniac, the chair is yours.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Sn- oh, right here. Right here. Ms. Snyder, will you please take a roll call of counsel, please?
Mrs. Ackerman?
Here.
Mr. Drake?
Here.
Mr. Horniac?
Here.
Mrs. Pauloff?
Here.
Mr. Salander?
Here.
Mr. Wallenzac?
Here.
Thank you, counsel. Please note that all members are present with the exception of Mr. Reeves. Mr. Reeves did have a prior commitment, did talk to me ahead of time to let me know I'd seek a motion to excuse Mr. Reeves from this evening's meeting.
Mr. President?
Ms. Pauloff.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Pauloff.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Drake. Are there any objections? Hearing none. Mr. Reeves is excused from the meeting. Please note also joining us for the meeting this evening is Mayor Michael Seferian, city administrator Joel Mazer, clerk of council Joe Zett Snyder, law director Melissa Purpura, public service director Paul Roman, police chief Brandon Began, who I think stepped out, as well as assistant chief Ryan Spangler, fire chief Clayton O'Brien, assistant fire chief Mark Mullins, and finance director Nick Roman. Counsel, moving into our agenda for the evening, the first item on here is approval of the minutes from the June ninth, twenty-twenty-five regular council meeting. Counsel.
Mr. President.
Mr. Salander.
Thank you, Mr. President. I make a motion to accept the minutes from June ninth, twenty-twenty-five, regular council meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Salander. Seconded by Mr. Wallenzac. Thank you, Mr. Wallenzac. We have a motion by Mr. Salander, seconded by Mr. Wallenzac for approval of the minutes from the June ninth, twenty-twenty-five meeting. Counsel, are there any objections? Hearing none. The minutes are accepted as presented. First item on our agenda for this evening are persons and delegations, and we do have one that I think we all consider one of our more fun evening endeavors throughout the course of the year. We have a contingent from the Oregon Community Theater here, the Children's Summer Theater Program, and I think they're gonna share a few words and maybe a few songs with us. Is there a leader of the group? Please just introduce yourself and your group, please.
Hi, I'm Beth Giller. I'm the director of the summer program for the Oregon Community Theater, Children's Summer Theater. It's my fourteenth year of directing in the summer. And just in case you didn't know, we have five youth theater groups in Oregon. We have the Clay Limelighters. Cardinal Stritch has recently reinvigorated their drama program. We have Ram Drama, which deals with kindergarten through eighth grade. Junior Limelighters, that's fifth through eighth, and our program is second grade through eighth grade. We have ninety-one children in the show this year, and that's, I hate to say this, a little low for us. Last year was like a hundred and fifteen for Shrek, but ninety-one kids. We have thirty-two wranglers, and the wranglers are teenagers and college students who have graduated from our program and then come back to help with the students. And they run all the backstage, they run all the tech. We absolutely could not do it without them, and they are extremely valuable, and they give, they volunteer their summer for this, for fun, I guess. I don't know. They seem to like it. We have about fifteen adults involved on a daily basis. My producer Lisa Keller is back there. Erin Hagedorn is over there. She does a lot of social media stuff for us, and then lights and sets and all kinds of things. So about fifteen adults, and then when the show comes around, many, many, many more adults are involved. Because we have the number of kids we do, I double cast the leads, so that means that in Seussical, which is this year, I have two Horton Elephants. I have two Jojos. I have two Mr. Mayors, and that makes it so that more of them can have featured parts, but they're all in every show, and that is an organizational nightmare, just let me say that. We have a great collaboration between the theater and the school system and the city. We're so grateful for the financial support you offer to our program every year. We could not do it without that financial support, and it is just really valuable to us. Tonight, I only have one student for you. Sometimes I bring thirty, but tonight we just have one. Seussical is based on the, obviously, the stories of Dr. Seuss, and the main story that runs through is a story of Jojo the Who, who is on the clover that Horton the Elephant hears and picks up and takes care of until that clover gets stolen and then he has to go get it. It's a really fun show with lots and lots of music. It's almost all music and dancing. Anyway, the young lady behind me, she's going to tell you a little bit about herself and the role that she plays.
Hi, I'm Elsie Hagedorn. I'm going into seventh grade at Vassett Junior High. This is my tenth show in the Oregon area, and I'm, I play Jojo in Seussical.
And she's going to sing for you a song called "It's Possible," just a very short clip of it, in which what's happening in "It's Possible." Where are you in that song?
I'm in a bathtub, and I'm like in my own little world, in my imagination, and I'm saying like anything's possible. You can think like whatever you want to think.
And what, what leads up to you getting in the bathtub? Who's giving you a hard time?
Oh, cat, the cat in the hat.
Teasing her and trying to get her to be disobedient to her parents, but they're in this bathtub together singing this song. So she's gonna go over there so everybody can see her in here. We do have some small little save-the-date cards for you. Please, if you want to pass them out to friends, go ahead and do that. We'd love to see you. We'll even copy tickets if you let us know you're with city council. All right? Thank you so much for having us. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I was gonna say, as they finish passing everything out, if there's anybody that was here just for, I'll say, this participation piece, and you want to take off before the regular business meeting itself, please feel free to do so at this time. Thank you all. Thank you, everybody. As I said, certainly our Oregon Community Theater, especially with our kids program, is truly one of our shining stars. We appreciate all those and, all those that volunteer and put time into that. So, moving on through our agenda, the rest of persons and delegations, we've got a number of people signed in to speak this evening. Before we do, just a couple of ground rules, if you will. We'll try to keep everybody around five minutes because we do have a number of people. Want to give everybody an opportunity to do that. And I just remind everybody, make sure you're addressing council as a whole or the administration as we go through this, and we'll just keep it in a civil tone. Make sure we enjoy ourselves this evening. First person I have is Aaron Gray. And Mr. Gray, if you'd come up, just say your name and your address for the record, please.
Morning, counsel. Aaron Gray, ten twenty-six North Kujno Road, Oregon, Ohio, four three six one six. Today, I wanted to come up and talk to the council. Joel, as you know, I've reached out to you with some concerns and on a project that you guys were a part of. That project represented a local organization, nonprofit organization, that was looking to tear down a building. From my, from my side of things, I was contacted by that organization, was told that the city, both you and the former city administrator had approached that organization and said that they, they were to acquire that property, that the city would come alongside them, help them obtain the grant, and help fund the grant. We bid the project. We were awarded the project. We sat, I sat in multiple meetings with that, spent a lot of time on that project. While I sat on that project with you and helped, not only with you and Paul, but alongside Rodney. You guys put together the scope of work for that project. Towards the end, not even a month ago, I was met with a dilemma. I was, presented a contract, and in that contract, the price for what I had bid the project to do was not accurate. It was not true. I was told by that organization to either sign that contract and do it the way that they wanted to do it, or to step down from it. Then another local contractor in the area had been reached out to, my bid was shared, and that that contractor would be willing to beat my, beat our work and beat our bid. I told him that's not right. There's a PLA involved. There's prevailing wage rates involved, and I will not cut corners. I reached out to Rodney with concerns, let him know that I'm being asked to sign a contract in a scope of work that's not correct, and that that organization told me that Rodney, on behalf of you, Joel, said it was okay to initial that contract, to one-line that contract, and Rodney was, no, I did not say that, after I talked to Rodney. My concern is, is after telling that organization that we would not do that, that I did not feel it was right, and that I could not in moral compass do that project, I was, I reached out to that contractor, let them know. It was very profanely sworn at, threatened, both not only verbally, not only verbally, but physically, and with suit due to his monetary possessions and the funds that he had, along with his political connections to both the prosecutor, unfortunately, and the judge, and that if I brought forth any of this, that I would be sued, and I would basically be disappeared. Not even a week later, I got attacked by that contractor's son. And it sucks, because Joel, a week before that happened, I reached out to you with concerns and said, Joel, this is not going right. There's issues here. You said you were not aware of it, and you were gonna poke your nose around and get back to me. It's been crickets. And it's frustrating to be a small business that has busted my butt, that has not had anything handed to me. I wasn't born into a family with businesses and doing the line of work that I did, but I was born and raised to the best of my ability to serve my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. And my beliefs as a Christian doesn't make me any better than any one of you up here. I am as equally broken and imperfect as any man or woman in this, man or woman in this office or in this room today. But it is frustrating when I reach out and try to do something ethically and correctly, and the minute it's, doesn't match up with a certain agenda or direction that municipality or organization wants to go, I'm, I feel that I'm just left out to hang and left out to dry. And first, I want to know why. Why didn't I not hear anything back, Joel? Why did this go the way that it did?
Are you asking me now, Mr. President?
Please.
First and foremost, I think council needs to hear some of the things, some of the history of this, of what's been going on. The grant itself, yes, I did write it on behalf of the, working with the Oregon Jerusalem Historical Society, but the historical society is the grant recipient.
Correct.
And I told you on the phone, too, if I had it my way, we would have been the grant recipient. We could have run the project, and it kind of gone through the bid process, but being as such, the historical society has to run the project, so the contracts have to go through them in their name, and we're assisting them. So we're like an arm's length. And just as a reminder, we also have an agreement in place with them to help, remember, we went through this, this whole process of trying to get a vote to enter into a contract with them to help front the money, because the demolition work was going to cost more than what the historical society has in the bank. I mean, the historical society's a small organization. So since we couldn't get to a vote, the OEDF stepped in and is able to have that role. So we don't really have a role other than we're just trying to help a local organization. That's our role. And we also have thirty thousand dollars set aside, budgeted from city council, that they requested, that the historical society requested and wanted to use the thirty thousand dollars as matching funds, since there is a matching requirement for the grant. So they want to use that thirty thousand plus an additional amount that they have set aside to cover the entire match component. That's a requirement of the grant. So, yes, we did meet, I believe it was in February, was it?
We met twice. We met in December, and we met in April ninth, or sorry, April tenth.
Yeah, I remember. My dates, I'm just trying to think back off a memory of when that was. Yeah, and we did, Rodney was there and helped out, helped with putting together the scope of work. Again, at the time, I thought things were moving smooth. There's different sides to the story. What you're telling is one side of the story. There is another side of the story, and that's, that's, you know, if there is a contract, whether there is a contract or not a contract.
Here, presented to me and signed.
That's, that's fair. I, I don't, I haven't seen that, but that is a contract. That's not with the city. That's with the historical society and your business.
Correct.
So again, we're just trying to help out an organization. My understanding is that a letter was sent to you.
No.
Terminating the contract, if there is a contract. At the time, I don't know that there was a contract or not. Again, there's two sides of the story. I'm not gonna be up here right now on the floor of council debating speculation on, on what is, for me, for, for me speculating on something would be hearsay. I don't have the facts of what you have in that, in that file folder compared to what the Oregon Jerusalem Historical Society has in hand. So other than that, that's where we're at. It is a, it does have to be a prevailing wage job.
Correct.
Sorry that, that you had to endure that, you know, the verbal, and I don't know if it got physical, confrontational, but that's, you know, that's not tolerated, and I think that person was, that was, that was addressed, so.
I hope it's gonna, I'm sorry.
That's, other than that, I, you know, again, that's a contract between you and the Oregon Jerusalem Historical Society. I mean, addressing it with council and the city as a municipality when we're not party to a contract, I don't have a lot to say about it. So I think that needs to be addressed with you and the historical society.
My concerns are that on April tenth, when I sat at the historical society with you, Rodney, Paul Roman, you guys were very concerned that, with me being a contractor that had not done demo work with you guys directly, that first and foremost, the project was done per the scope of work, that it was done by the contract and paperwork provided by the land bank that you guys reviewed and received. That email was forwarded to me as well. The biggest frustration I have is in that scope of work, it clearly outlines, and in the contract, that not only was there a prevailing wage requirement, but there was also a PLA agreement. Both were broken, and the scope of work sent out and provided and created by the city of Oregon, that project has not been correctly inspected or audited through and through. I reached out to you at the very beginning of it with my concern of that, and let you know what was going on, and let you know that the contractor told me he didn't care. He didn't care about the city. He didn't care about the county. He didn't care about the union, that if I brought any of this to light, I would be sued, that I would be made to disappear. When I reached out to the union, the union showed up on site with me and verified that, yes, in fact, there was a PLA. Yes, in fact, city of Oregon was in the middle of it. They were a part of it, not just assisting from the sidelines. And that when the union, Local Eighteen, went to the Building Trades Council to file agreements, they were getting major pushback. This is what I was told by the Local Eighteen rep, that the building council was getting major pushback from, pardon the quote there, as to not to file. I don't understand why is there so much political pushback against this project and against the contractor that is simply trying to do things the right way, and it seems like anytime there's money involved on a project like this, if anything's questioned about it, it just disappears. And I'm hoping that this isn't just gonna disappear. I'm hoping that those funds aren't the least, because it's not right, it's not honest, and it's not morally correct. And the fact that I reached out before, during, and now after with no response back from you really is frustrating for the owner of a company that has been approached by multiple city employees, multiple- city employees, multiple city inspectors, based on the quality of work that I've done, the image that we have built, and how I've chosen to try to carry myself and build this business. That multiple times I have heard, would you please come forward? Would you be willing to do more work with the city because we are at a lack for quality contractors? And I finally step up to the plate and I work alongside you guys and I feel like I completely been left out and trapped on and it sucks. Because I have emails, voice recordings, phone call recordings, and text messages. And I have called you multiple times, Joel, as a city administrator and for my understanding the lead. I left messages for you to call me back and it wasn't until I called you directly on your cell phone that you called me and finally talked to me and I never heard back from you. So to have to sit here and listen to you say that you didn't know anything about it, you never saw it, or you just weren't willing to see it is really frustrating.
Mr. President?
Please.
I haven't seen a copy of a signed contract. I haven't seen the letter from the Oregon Jerusalem Historical Society. So the accusations that you're claiming right now are not.
On that phone call.
But what I'm, what I'm, what I'm letting you know is that I'm not in a position to discuss something. You did mention that there could be a legal ramification that you might be willing to take upon another organization in this community. It's not the city's place to get involved in that unless we need to be brought in with a prosecutor or somebody else, but we are not a party to that contract.
One last question for you before I terminate, if it's all right. In that meeting on April 10th and even in December, you brought up the fact that the legal director, I'm not sure of the position she held, had brought up concern whether or not the city of Oregon was able to sit in as a fiduciary responsibility and provide those funds. My concern is, is that you said that OEDF stepped in. Did they step in or did they requested to step in to move those funds over there?
Go ahead, Mr. Roman.
Mr. President, if you recall, several of you were members of the Oracle, Oregon Historical Society and couldn't vote on that agreement with the historical society. And it was a question, what do we do? And I think OEDF was asked by us really to step in. It wasn't them asking to step in. I'm sure they have other things to do than to deal with a nonprofit organization taking on a grant and trying to do something that they've never done before. I was at the two meetings. I was at the April 10th meeting and I do recall from the get-go, and this is maybe back in December, they had two bids, they received two bids. It was your bid and the other contractor, the other contractor they decided to go with, and that was a lower bid. Now, you can debate what's in your bid and what's in their bid, their bid was lower. But in those two meetings, in December and April, we tried to work with you as the contract. We went through the scope of services.
Correct.
With you. How many other bidders get that shot at second guessing their quote? I think there was a preference from the historical society to pick your company. And even though they had another lower bid and they're a nonprofit organization, they were trying to work it out with you. That's how April 10th went and I think it went very well. I thought it was all laid out. I think we laid out the scope of work. You were in agreement, we were in agreement. I think it was going forward, it was gonna meet the grant requirements. And for some reason, I don't know if it was a matter of you not signing the contract or you maybe not agreeing to the final price or the final scope of work, but I think in the end, and this is for what little knowledge I know, that organization decided to go with the first original lower bid.
So on April 10th, I had a copy of the email that was presented to me along with the agreement and letterhead for OJHS. We not only were awarded it, you're correct, we were awarded, we were not the lowest. But when public funds are used, it's not only lowest, but lowest and best. And in our contract and in our bid that you guys saw, Michelle presented it, I presented it, I had copies of it. Our bid met all of the criteria, along with the asbestos abatement, along with the EPA protocols, along with the prevailing wage rates and the PLA agreement that was required by the state of Ohio to receive those funds by OJHS, to OJHS. City of Oregon's scope was to monitor that, to protect that and to verify that. Everything went according to that scope and it has not. I called, I let you know what was going on. Nobody inspected it, nobody seemed to want to look into the concern that I have. And I have an email from OJHS last year saying that that contractor was lowest, but they were not the best due to the lack of the asbestos abatement in there. And multiple times over, that is why we were awarded it. And if you guys would like to see the documentation I have, I would be more than willing to share it.
But.
Because nobody seemed to want to look at it then.
Mr. President?
Go ahead.
I can tell you from the first round of bids, the scope of work was not clear. You know, whether your price included the abatement or didn't include it, I think in the end, the April 10th scope changed, right?
By direction of.
It changed and there was no rebid. You were still given that opportunity even without the other contractor having a shot at submitting another bid. You had the shot of revising your bid in order to meet that new scope. So they were sticking with you all through April 10th. As for what happened after that, I can't speak for them.
We weren't.
Okay.
OJ.
Correct. But what I'm saying is you had way more of an opportunity to change your price and yours for what you were agreeing to do than what the other contractor did.
So let me ask you this.
Okay.
Would the city send out a scope of work, collect, collect bids, award the project based on that contractor's bid, and send out an addendum with a scope of work change, allowing that contractor to send out a new price matching that scope? Because I received the scope and I was connected in the email with both you, myself, OJHS, and Rodney, where they changed it. We resent back a new bid.
As a city, we would advertise a public bid and go through the proper channels, but this is a nonprofit organization that we're just trying to help out.
Then why, so hear me out. The reason our contract was not re-released, because I did sign it. The issue is, is that they wanted me to let a contract go back to them with almost a $30,000 difference in what we bid it for and trust them that they would reissue us a new contract with the correct number on it. Would the city of Oregon do that to a contractor? Would the, would the city of Oregon sign a contract if you guys sent out a proposal for what it would cost you guys to do a job and allow that customer to send it back to you?
We would have sent it out blank for the contractor to sign it and then it would come back to the city to sign. That's how we would normally do it.
Correct. But I wasn't. And when I let you know that what was going on, I never got a phone call back. And that's what's frustrating. Because I tried every step of the way to make sure my company upheld the scope of work and made sure we did it every, that we followed every step A to Z to make sure that that grant money came back. Because Paul and Joel, you guys both made it very clear that that was your biggest concern, is that the project went well, that the PLA was met, the prevailing wage rates were met, and that everything was done per the grant requirements to make sure that that money was returned and that nobody was left unpaid. And the minute it went south, the minute that I was threatened to either do it for, to send back a contract with a lesser amount and trust an organization that has failed and presented multiple fraudulent documents to me and asked me to sign them is extremely frustrating. Extremely frustrating. That's all I have.
Mr. President, if I could just wrap up.
I was gonna say briefly.
I, I just, you know, if it, it is, it is an issue between your company and OJHS. Bottom line, I mean, that's where the contract is. And for us to get into something what could wind up into a legal battle between the two of you, I don't, I don't think it's our place to do, to be there. So I'd, I'd be happy to help try to bridge a conversation between you and the historical society. But again, like Paul said, we're just trying to help out the organization and I've said it all along, we, we're, we're not the grant recipients. We do have budgeted $30,000 from city council that they requested to help provide matching funds for this. That's what we have.
So does the city plan on doing anything about the fact that the prevailing wage rates and the PLA was broken? Because per the scope of work.
Mr. Mazur, if I could, Mr. Gray. And I think what, what Joel's trying to say, maybe I'll, I'll just put a finer point on it, is we're not a party to the contract or the organization or the execution of what was included in the contract and how that was done. I would think that that would be information that if the historical society is not aware of, that they need to be made aware of and that if something in the agreement between them and whoever performed the work was not done according to that, ultimately that comes to the historical society to pursue. It wouldn't be a function of the city nor city council. To Joe's point, what we are trying to do is help them facilitate it by, by more or less being somewhat of a mentor of how to get through this process with the grant writing and everything else. So I think perhaps the best avenue is some type of discussion or, or, you know, meeting with them perhaps to share those concerns that can be raised appropriately. And obviously, our historical society is important to us, but we want to make sure that things are followed and things are done right. And I would certainly believe that they would want that same. So if we can help facilitate that discussion and meeting, I think that, that's probably the next worthwhile step for you.
So Joel, you're willing to step in and facilitate that, organize that, make sure that the scope of work and contract was done correctly?
Mr. President?
Go ahead.
I'm willing to help facilitate a meeting. I can't guarantee that the other party is gonna be willing to sit down. Okay?
We'll give it an effort to try to do so. Thank you, Mr. Gray. Moving on, next person we have is Bud Graham.
I'm here for a question.
Okay, you hold on. Okay. Next, we have Pete Rayner. Mr. Rayner, if you just state your name and your address for the record, please.
Pete Rayner, 2025 West Baywood Drive, Oregon, Ohio. I'm here to ask city council, because the boom fest is up in the air, they're poor planning all the way around, we're down to the wire. Now, we want to rearrange the fireworks so that can happen. I think we just put the money in the coffers and start planning for 2026 and go from there. We spent countless hours, two hours here last Wednesday, dinking around for poor planning. And poor planning does not constitute an emergency upon council to throw money out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rayner. We're gonna.
Mr. President?
Do you want to address? Go ahead, Mayor.
I sure do. Actually, I don't know where the poor planning came from, but we have everything under control. So the date is still the same, the fireworks are still the same, the money is all but secured. So everything will go on according to hoil, so to speak. So I don't know where you got your information or bad information, but we're in good shape. But I appreciate your concern. We'll be able to do it this year and next year.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. We'll move on. Deb Baker. Here, Deb.
Oh. Why not?
Feel free.
I can do it. I, I talk loudly anyway. I, I listen to the meetings at home, so I know that people don't talk loud enough sometimes and it's hard to hear them, so.
Fair enough.
I'll try to talk loudly.
We'll need to ask you to state your name and your address for the record.
Deborah Baker, 3445 Pickle Road. I have a couple issues really tonight. One is first, I want to praise so much, I just have to tell you guys, you don't know what you have in Paula Benton for the senior center. You really don't. That woman works tirelessly every day and she's, as we come in tonight, her car is still there. She does it all, I mean, she just works tirelessly, trying to help everybody and everything else. And it upsets me a lot because I go there and I see the turmoil she's going through and the hardships. Because we all know that the levy didn't pass and she's struggling to make ends meet and thank God she got that $100,000 donation, but it's still not what she had last year. So it's still, she's still trying to, you know, and then I, I think she, I mean, I talk to her sometimes and I see the stress on her face and it's like, the expectation is she's gonna go out and try to raise money for people, get people to match that $100,000. She doesn't have time for that. She's too busy on a day-to-day basis trying to do everything at the senior center. I mean, us old people require a lot of maintenance and, and they do a lot of stuff that other senior centers don't do for their people. They take them back and forth, try to, you know, go get bread for them so they have, you know, stuff, other food items, and she tries to coordinate a lot of stuff. And I just feel terrible for her right now and I don't know if there's anything that can be done about it, but I know her staff works diligently to, to try to do something. I guess I'm just here to say, if there's anything possible, anybody could help her out to raise some of that money, to get some of those funds matched, you know, you guys have a lot of power out there to reach out to people and businesses, that they could try to reach out, see if they could get any donations. I mean, it seems like it's all left up to her, you know, and it seems like that's unfair to me. And also, she's, right now, I was there today, I, me and my husband go there almost, well, at least two or three times a week, trying to help out. We also donate money, try to, as much as we can. But she had a grand, well, the ladies wanted it, she wanted to have a sewing room. Ladies want to do quilting and stuff. So she tried to, you know, she got donations for that, she bought some sewing machines, had some donated. Well, now that she's told she can't have a sewing room, there's not the right electricity that runs through the building for that. So that's kind of, and then she's told, well, we can't store any of the stuff in the room either because there's no sprinkling system. So now she's having to get rid of, you know, like material and all this stuff that people use, you know, I mean, it's just frustrating to me to see that, you know, and I, I don't know, maybe I need explanation of how the whole system works. That building is not hers, obviously. That building, does it belong to the city?
Yes.
Okay. So isn't the city's responsibility to somewhat, to take care of things like a sprinkling system? Or make sure there's enough electrical outlets? I mean, how much power can four sewing machines take up? If you can't hook up four sewing machines and a light over the head, I mean, I don't get it. So anyway, that's just one of the things I'm frustrated about at this point. And I just wanted to come here and sing her praises and say that you guys, if you ever get to the point where you have to go use the senior center, you'll find out what a wonderful person and her staff is and how much they care about everybody, how much I try to do for people. And I'll leave it at that. I just, I would like for something to be done. Like I said, you guys have a lot of power reaching out to businesses in the area, if anybody can help get financial donations to match that $100,000. I mean, I can't imagine what she would have done if that person hadn't run it in the Metro Press and donated that $100,000. I mean, we would have been probably closing the doors, apparently. I mean, that's my understanding from what the money that she had last year, what it takes to sustain that building and keep everything going, that was, like, she was like over, I don't know, it was only getting like a third of that money this year or less than a half, let's say that. And now she doesn't divulge all the financial stuff to me. But, I mean, I hear bits and pieces of stuff from other people and whatever too, but if that's the truth, what was she supposed, what are you supposed, what was she supposed to do? If somebody didn't donate $100,000 out of the kindness of their heart, somebody that just happened to read about it, that lives in Florida and had a father that used to live in Oregon, where would they have been this year? Our, our senior center would have been closed? I mean, that's kind of my question and, like I said, and I don't think it's up to her to have to put a sprinkling system in or run a more electrical lines. We can have a few sewing machines or whatever, but I'll leave that up to you guys. The other thing that I have to have a question about is that same property we were talking, I've been talking about since a year or so ago, down on Pickle Road. I have all my documentation, I still kept it here with me. I called and put in a complaint on June 10th through your online system, not called, I put it online. The property that's been sitting there for probably five years where nobody lives in it and you can't even see the building anymore or the car or anything else. I'm trying to see, it's 2759 Pickle Road, 2759 Pickle Road. And it was apparently in rears of taxes, probably about, I don't know, three or four years, a person died. And nothing's been done. I mean, last year, I think I complained three or four times, they went down there two or three times and maybe cut, well, you can't even say grass anymore, it's basically trees all over now. You can't even see, like I said, you can't see the house, the car that sat in the driveway or anything. And it's, I mean, so there's no sense even you guys going out there, if you're gonna just trim the little bit of grass, you can trim because there's no grass left, it's trees now. So I'm just wondering where the status of that is because it's an eyesore. And while you're at it, I haven't complained about this, but there's another property on Pickle Road that we go past every day. Pickle Road that we go past every day, just about. And is there a policy about cars sitting in the drive and your grass? Well, that's what I thought. There's cars sitting out there that actually have, I don't know what's mold, mildew, green stuff growing on them. They never move. The house looks like, I mean, it looks like a hoarder's house on the porch. And then there's cars that haven't been moved in probably a year and a half, two years. And I don't know, I guess I thought somebody was going to go by and inspect these things and try to make sure that people were abiding by the rules. I mean, me and my husband, we're not spring chickens. And you see my condition, we get out there, we do the stuff we have to do. We've always done it since we've lived in Oregon. To me, unless you're very disabled and have no one to help you and no money, there's no excuse. I'm just, that's my kind of a person I am. There's just no excuse. You have neighbors that you need to, you know, try to keep your house up for too. But anyway, that one is 4040 Pickle Road. Somebody might want to take a drive-by there because those cars have been out there forever. And it's just, it's an eyesore. It looks terrible. I don't know how some of the people that live around them haven't complained. Not for the 4040 one, not yet, because I didn't get the address until today. But we, I did for the other one, I filed that on 610. But I haven't done that one, but I will, I can do that, that's not a problem. But, so I will go home and do that today, actually, so. Go ahead.
Mr. President.
I was going to say, I think your complaint is noted today.
Okay, thank you.
I think you can skip the going online. Mr. Mazur.
Thank you. So to a few things, there was a lot there, so I'm.
I know, I'm sorry.
I've been making notes. No, it's okay.
I'm trying to get in my five minutes.
So to, just to kind of address the fundraising thing, the board has looked into working with the Area Office on Aging on securing the remaining funding source for this year and on a going-forward basis. So those discussions are still happening, and I've been talking with Paula about that and trying to work with her on setting something up with the Area Office on Aging. I know she had some questions, she just sent them to him last week, so we have some follow-up we'll be doing this week. As for the abandoned house, that, there is a process for that, and we are working with the land bank on some of these properties. I have to check and see if this is one of the addresses or not, but duly noted. And, you know, we can, there's only so much we can do. They, if a property owner still owns the property, they still have rights to the property, but they still have to abide by the law. So we, all we can do is nuisance abatement until we get, can get ourselves into a position to, if we need to acquire and demo it if it's abandoned, so.
Because my understanding was last year that I had called the Lucas County, and they said that it was in rears of taxes. I don't, I looked online too, but the person had died and that whoever was their heir responsible didn't want anything to do with it. They didn't have the money for the taxes, they didn't want anything to do with it, they washed their hands of it, so. I don't know. But, and it just worries me, it's sitting there, who knows what's infested with at this point? It's been there, I mean, the guy died, the refrigerator's probably still sitting in there with food in it, who knows?
And Mr. President, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just so you know, I mean, there are, I'm not sure if this is one of the properties that we're working with them on or not. But I'd have to look it up. But I know there's, there's one of them on Pickle Road. This one very well could be it. But, I mean, there are a couple of other properties that we're working with the land bank to try to expedite the foreclosure process so we can get into ourselves into a position to, unfortunately for the city and for us, is the only way to really truly take care of it is to go through this process. And then we would have to fund the demolition and then sell the property if we can. If not, then we're perpetual owners of it. But also for your 4040 Pickle Road, consider that, we'll get something in and get that started.
Somebody needs to drive by that place and look at that. I mean, I think, nothing else, the grass seems to be somewhat cut sometimes, but, I mean, those cars have been sitting there forever and they just, I mean, they're all over the grass, they're, I guess they're full of, whatever that green stuff, that grows on vehicles and stuff that doesn't move in a long time. Is it mold, mildew? I don't know what it is, but. And the other thing I'd like to look into, like I said, why is it the Oregon Senior Center's responsibility to have sprinkling systems? Isn't that something that?
Yeah, I was going to say, please speak to that. I was going to ask.
I have that on here, I just didn't.
I'm sorry, I do a lot of that, I know.
The power, I don't, that's the first I've heard of, the power issue with the sewing machines. So let me take a look into that with Keith. And then also the sprinkler system. So the building is designed a certain way, and it's for a certain use. So for storage in certain areas, and I know that, you know, fire inspection has gone through there, they did send a notice just to say, hey, you know, it's got to be cleaned up in the storage area. So that's, I think that's what's, what the, what's being addressed is how much accumulation of things there are being stored. And I think when I talked, last talked with Paula, she was addressing it. So she's in the process of sorting through it and getting it taken care of.
With the Senior Center, you get rid of stuff, and then people make donations every day. I mean, I went there today and there was boxes sitting there, and I'm like, oh! And you know, it's like, you know, all these older people pass away, you're going to homes, and they bring it over there for, and I mean, people can use some of it, but other things, you have to figure out what to do with it. It takes a while to weed through it, okay, where can we send it to? Who can take this? Who can take that? So it's, I mean, I don't want to throw everything in the trash, I don't think anybody else does, if somebody can use it. We want to try to get it to the people that can need it, that need it, so. Anyway, all right, well, I'd appreciate if you'd look into that about the, like I said, and the sprinkling system and all that stuff and the electrical, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Baker. I have a follow-up based on the Senior Center question because I've had residents ask me this over the past, I'll say, month or so. Do we know, has the Senior Center looked at going back to the ballot? I have not heard anything about that.
Mr. President.
Are we aware of anything? Yes, go ahead, Mr. Mazur.
Yep. So when, the last time that I've spoken with the board, they wanted to look into seeking the remaining funding from the Area Office on Aging. Since that levy did pass, and Oregon, last time I checked, is still in the county. But, so, you know, we'd like to see if there's a way to bridge that, and then on a going-forward basis, see if the Area Office on Aging would fund the Senior Center through their funding sources. So we're still sorting that out, but there is that possibility that it could go back on the ballot.
Absolutely. I remember a little of that conversation when they had gone on the ballot last year, some of that debate back and forth between the Area Office on Aging and the Oregon Senior Group as far as how those fit in or intertwined together for funding sources. I also know that the Area Office on Aging has certain sense of requirements of curriculum and different activities that are required, which I don't believe were quite within the plan of what our director felt was going to be offered in Oregon. So I know there's, there were a couple nuances back and forth about that, but I've had a few people ask if they were coming back on, so I appreciate your update to that. So, thank you, Ms. Baker. Thank you, everybody. We will move into the items into our agenda for this evening. And council, we did not have a committee of the whole meeting last week, so I think, Mr. Gray, I have you on here twice. I'm assuming once, you're good with once. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I make a motion to add items number 109 through 114 of 2025 to this evening's meeting agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Wallenzak. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Slender. Thank you, Mr. Slender. Motion by Mr. Wallenzak, seconded by Mr. Slender to add items 109 through 114, 2025 to this evening's agenda. Counselors, is there any objection? Hearing none, the items are added. We'll move into item 109 of 2025 presented by Mayor Mike Seferian and Fire Chief Clayton O'Brien, and we'll go to Chief O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President. And council, this ordinance is the second step in our process in selling our apparatus or the surplus of apparatus that we do have. We talked extensively a little bit about, or extensively about this during the budget time. And so these apparatus that are listed before you are ones where the first process was to have the third-party valuation of the apparatus. And now the second step would be able to get this ordinance approved. So then we could go to the third step, which will then be to allow us to begin removing the decals and place the units on gov deals. So that's what this ordinance would do.
Very good. Thank you, chief. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. Slender.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know, chief, we had talked just briefly about this. I've mentioned I was going to ask, but I think it's maybe more of a finance director question. But I had, I was talking to a citizen that came up to me and was asking about this. And the one question is just, when the items are sold, when the apparatus are sold, does the funds, do the funds from that, does it go back into general fund for the fire department? Or how does that work?
Go ahead, chief.
Mr. President.
I'm sorry, Mr. Roman.
So when we originally budgeted this, we did have the revenues going into the general fund. When these apparatuses were originally purchased, they were all purchased out of the general fund. That 235 fund, which is the EMS operating, that has started bringing revenue, it started in 2015, 2016 timeframe. And so when it comes time to buy a new apparatus, specifically a fire engine, we are not 100% sure that we'll be able to cover that fully with the EMS operating fund. So at that time, we would need to use general fund monies to help pay for the apparatus. So we had budgeted this in the general fund. So the plan as of right now is to put the money into the general fund.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Roman.
Thank you.
That's good. Counsel, any additional questions? Hearing no additional questions, I will sign item 109 of 2025 as ordinance, 109 of 2025, and ask Ms. Snyder to read it into the record.
Authorizing the mayor and finance director to declare certain fire department apparatuses as surplus property, authorizing their sale and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Counsel.
Mr. President.
Ms. Pauloff.
I move for passage of ordinance 109 of 2025 as an emergency measure.
Thank you, Ms. Pauloff. Seconded by Mr. Wallenzak. Thank you, Mr. Wallenzak. We have a motion by Mrs. Pauloff, seconded by Mr. Wallenzak for ordinance 109 of 2025. Ms. Snyder, will you please take a roll call, vote of council?
Mrs. Pauloff?
Yes.
Mr. Wallenzak?
Yes.
Mrs. Ackerman?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yay.
Mr. Horniac?
Yes.
Mr. Slander?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Ordinance 109 of 2025 does pass with a vote of six yays and zero nays. Moving on to item 110 of 2025, presented by Mayor Michael Seferian and Public Service Director, Mr. Roman, Mr. Paul Roman. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance is needed to proceed with the construction of the East Morland Drive Storm Sewer Improvement Project. This project consists of replacing the existing old storm sewer, 12- and 18-inch storm sewer between Wheeling Street and Berlin on East Morland on the boulevard. Out of six bids received, Buckeye Excavating Construction was the lowest and best bid. Bid tab is included in Exhibit A, and Buckeye has done a lot of work for the city in the past, road reconstruction and sanitary sewer work. And we're confident that they would do a good job on this project. So again, this was included in the budget, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. Counsel, any questions on item 110 of 2025? Hearing none, I will assign item 110 of 2025 as ordinance, 110 of 2025, and ask Ms. Snyder to read it into the record.
Accepting the bid of Buckeye Excavating and Construction Incorporated, 191 State Route 61, Norwalk, Ohio, for furnishing labor materials and equipment for the East Morland Drive Storm Sewer Improvement 2025, authorizing the mayor, director of public service, and finance director to enter into a contract with said contractor and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Counsel.
Mr. President.
Ms. Pauloff.
I move for passage of ordinance 110 of 2025 as an emergency measure.
Thank you, Ms. Pauloff.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wallenzak. Thank you, Mr. Wallenzak. We have a motion by Mrs. Pauloff, seconded by Mr. Wallenzak for ordinance 110 of 2025. Ms. Snyder, will you please take a roll call, vote of council?
Mrs. Pauloff?
Yes.
Mr. Wallenzak?
Yes.
Mrs. Ackerman?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yay.
Mr. Horniac?
Yes.
Mr. Slander?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Ordinance 110 of 2025 does pass with a vote of six yays and zero nays. Moving on to item 111 of 2025, again presented by Mayor Mike Seferian and Public Service Director, Paul Roman. Mr. Roman?
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance is needed to proceed with the construction of the 2025 sidewalk and miscellaneous concrete work project. Scope of work includes, but not limited to, the removal, replacement, and installation of four-inch, six-inch-thick concrete sidewalk, concrete curb grading, and seating and all related work. There is a memo attached to this ordinance along with the bid tab. But if you were to look at the memo, it is, the work is broken into three elements. And the first is an aggregate walking path, stone path that would be on the west side of Wind from Eden Park up to Seaman Road. If you look at that area, the homes on the east side are very close to Wind Road. The right-of-way is very limited. To really get a sidewalk in on the east side to continue from Eden Park to Seaman, it'd be extremely difficult. And we had said in budget that with, originally with our waterline project, we thought it could be open cut, and we could put the aggregate walking path in at that time. It is a board project, but we still wanted to keep our promise through the budget to put in a walking path. We did put in an alternate bid item so that if, and we did meet with the Metro Parks on this, if they did want to put in concrete, they could choose to do that, but that would be at their cost. But we did receive a bid for that. We did send an email to them. We have not heard back from them. But the aggregate walking path, stone path, was included in the base bid. So that's the first element. Second one is, we have a lot of sidewalk curb repair work from past waterline breaks, and that work is included here. That cost is being paid for through the water revenue, just so you know that. And then really, the bulk of the project is just replacement of deteriorated curb and sidewalk throughout the city at various locations. I believe almost all of them are residential properties, and I think they're also included in Exhibit A. So Quinn was the single bid, but they've done a lot of work for us in the past and have done good work. And so therefore, they are the lowest and best bid, and we recommend them for this job. Again, happy to answer. Oh, and I wanted to mention too, in that aggregate walking path, we also have a small sidewalk section that would go from the Drake to Pearson Park. If you drive past on Seaman Road, the Drake subdivision ends short of the J. Shore property. What you notice is a lot of people that leave the Drake to cross into Pearson Park, they're going through the grass, the tall weeds and trees, and they go up a hill. If we just extend that sidewalk a little bit to the east and get them to the opening, the actual drive opening to the Metro Parks, it's actually a much safer crossing. We think it's appropriate that that go in, and that's also a part of this project as well. So that's it. And again, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. Counsel, any questions? I do have one question on this, Mr. Roman, and it speaks to that, and we've talked about this before. Extending the sidewalk to the east from the Drake and going across the street, there is that power box that's right there, and I would tell you, it is much safer because there is about an 18-inch-deep hole that sits right between the end of that sidewalk
and where most people would cross into the park, because I tell you, I've found that hole myself. How does that work with that power structure there?
Well, we would likely jog the sidewalk to go around it and fill, certainly fill in the hole, but yeah, it isn't something where we're proposing to go all the way across J. Shore's property, but we think just enough of sidewalk in the right of way to get to the road opening to the Pearson Park, and then you have an at grade crossing right there would be proper. So, yeah, I think it's just jogging around that box, so.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Roman. Counsel, any additional questions on item 111?
Mr. President. Mr. Walensak. I have a question on, if it's on J. Shore's property and we're putting a sidewalk in, should J. Shore pay for it? Should we pay for it? I mean, because other neighborhoods could argue, well, you're doing it for them, why aren't you doing it for us?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question, Mr. President, Mr. Walensak. And it is a question of safety, as to what point do you, does the public cover the cost of something? Not to say that a sidewalk couldn't go down J. Shore property as well. Actually, the city owns part of the property between J. Shore and the Wind Road as well, and that could be part of the debate. And I think regardless, it really is just a question of, do you see a lot of people jaywalking across, you know, Seaman Road? It's not much of a project. You're putting in ramps as well. To some degree, even when you petition a project, the work in the right of way and intersection is the public's cost. So, and again, I did, I had this in the budget as well. So, it is a debate, you know? There are storm sewers. We run into this all the time. People ask, I'm a taxpayer, why don't I have a storm sewer? Well, there are some neighborhoods that, you know, storm never went in, and there's a lot of streets in Oregon that actually petitioned for storm sewers, and they got them. A lot of it occurred in the 60s, and, but there's some neighborhoods that they're never going to be able to pass a petition. And then, if all the water goes to one particular property, it's a question of, well, does the public ever step in when you know it's a lot of rain, road drainage going to that one property? So, I know that's a little bit of a digressing from your question, but the reality is, when does the public step in versus an assessed project, right?
I would, I would say, a water issue with storm and a sidewalk are two different sorts.
Well, you could argue the sidewalk is more of a public safety issue in some cases than the drainage. And so, that's what I'm, that's my point.
Is it a public safety issue when you have kids walking in a subdivision that have to go to the street?
Well, that's the point of the, but, but, Mr. Walensak, that's the point of the crossing.
But where do we stop? Do we go to every neighborhood and fill in those sidewalks?
Yeah, I agree.
On the city dollar? Or you force them in?
You would order it in, to a degree.
Why aren't we ordering it in here, then?
You, well, that, that could always be done. We did it as a, we did it as a...
Well, you can't pick and choose winners.
I get it. I understand that. I think we see a lot of people crossing Seaman Road, and there should be a crossing, at least. And, and, hold on, let me finish. Because doing the crossing at the Drake Road, which you could do there, the terrain of Pearson Park is, you go up a hill, and the only, you almost have to go a little east to the end of the Drake's sidewalk. So, really, what we're putting in is a road crossing, to be quite honest. We're not really doing a free sidewalk for a school. We're doing a road crossing because we see a lot of people, and because of train, the best place to do it is at the end of the Drake's sidewalk. And because of that box, you're jogging it a little bit to make the crossing. That's it. So, this is, it's a public safety issue. You can debate it, but that's what it's for. And it's just not at the Drake because the train wouldn't work at Pearson Park.
Very good.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Walensak. Thank you, Mr. Roman. Counsel, any additional questions? Mr. President? Yes. I got a couple questions for Mr. Roman. Statement first, you know, I think it's great that the people that live around there can have a crosswalk, a sidewalk, whatever, to get into the park. I guess the problem I have is, and I see the dollar amount, 147,000 plus, you know, I guess, my, it's debatable on whatever we pass here, I realize that. And I just feel like the roads, and I was out in the South Shore area yesterday, and a lot of the roads in South Shore are in bad shape. Even Eagles Landing, I was shocked how, ba-bump, 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 not potholes, but just joints or whatever the heck they are. South Stephen over in East Morland's horrible. It's just disintegrating. I've never seen a road disintegrate from the middle to the curb. Also, Holly Drive, not because I live there, there's a lot of other people than me that drive on it. I mean, from Star Avenue to East Morland, I mean, it is just pothole after pothole, and it's like, and I got, I got neighbors asking me, they're like, Paul, what's going on with this? And it's like, you know, I have no problems with the sidewalks, but when you got roads that are just dwindling away to nothing, and I know roads aren't cheap to fix, it's a lot cheaper to put a sidewalk in, but you know what? Start on a road. I mean, you did Southeast Morland, what was it, last year? It's nice, but I'm just saying, there's, I believe, all these roads I just mentioned are probably used more than people walking their dog or whatever to the park. I mean, it's, it's great, I'm all about the safety of the crosswalk, but, you know, it's, it's what you want to spend it on, and I believe a road's more important.
Mr. President, Mr. Drake. We did put together, and we passed the road program, and it does include Northeast Morland North. There's a lot of roads that need to be done in Oregon. I mean, you, I could easily spend 20 million right now, literally.
Easy.
And we go through this every year on budget. Now, you know, on the, on the main roads, we're good at getting grants, and we pay that local match, and, you know, Navarre is a large project, $7 million project, safety improvement, more safety than it is, it will, you know, it'll get Mill and Phil. But Mr. Drake is right, you know, South Stephen, Hollydale, even, even south of East Morland, Hollydale, I mean, there's definitely a lot of areas where it's potholing, but it's, it's worse than that. And it's getting extremely difficult to figure out which streets to hit. But I can tell you, concrete work, we would do every three to five years. Well, this is at the five-year mark for concrete work. There's a lot of people waiting for this concrete work. We have to do this, okay? You're right, this is a small section, and you could view that as safety, and how does that compare to the everyday use? I get that. But all of this money comes from the general fund. That's the fund that's hurting. That is the fund that, we all compete, when we argued over the police and fire and where that money's going. What do you, what do you think I was arguing for? I'm arguing for the streets. That, that, that is general fund money. That is what's hurting. That's, it's a big deal. It's, I, I, you know, South Stephen and a few others, those are bad. Hollydale's bad, too. It's the east side of that road, very bad with joints. And some of these roads is the point where it's a full rebuild. Well, that's 10 times more than the Mill and Phil, but because, you know, we've gone so many years without the Mill and Phil, it's a full reconstruct. That's what's happening with Northeast Morland, just like Southeast Morland. So, yeah, that's the difficulty every year with budget. You know, we put together, the memos every year to kind of explain where things at, we show what's in the queue for the next couple of years, and the streets you mentioned are in that queue. And, you know, you try to do so many of the larger roads where you know you do have grant dollars, and then you try to do more of the local roads, but we're hurting on revenue for the local roads. There's no grant money for that. It is 100% general fund money. That is, that's what is the issue, is the general fund. So, I, I hear you, I understand you, and I, and I know, I tell you, I'm potholing, just getting the potholes filled. I've talked with streets on that, that upsets me, that there, I see other sections that aren't being hit, addressed right away, and that needs to be done. And Hollydale, not your street, but the next one over, south of you.
Holly.
There's a really bad pothole that needs to be repaired, and I've given that work order to streets, but, no, there's, there's a lot of areas that need to be done, and it's just, we're short on the general fund is the reality. That's just the reality of it.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Roman. Mr. Drake?
Please.
I got one other thing that, Paul, one of the comments he made, I know the new fire department, it's beautiful, beyond beautiful. People like to tour it, check it all out, and I know I brought this up probably a couple years ago. I mean, when's the last time a crew, the police department's taken a, citizens to tour the police department? I mean, it's, I remember being, when I worked in the buildings here, how they got pink tiles from probably the 1950s or 60s. They got old paneling with, that smells like maple syrup. I don't know if they're old maple pine panels or what, but, you know, the carpet there, it's like, it's just like, all rundown, and I'm thinking, you know, I'm all about the new fire station, but it's, the police department is, like, beyond belief. It's like, there's another thing, Paul, you know?
I agree.
I mean, even mentally, I feel sorry for them going in there and meeting in this little room, and I think, I don't know if it was the men's locker rooms half pink, and the women's is all pink, and it's just like, it's almost unheard of.
Mr. President.
Go ahead, Mr. Roman.
And, Mr. Drake, and again, if you recall at budget, we argue over, we compete for that general fund money, and it's hard. It's, it's hard.
Well, I guess my point is, how can you spend millions and millions of dollars on a fire station, which I'm not against, and then the police department's like, like Cedar Point's police department, it's like, it's just, here it is. I mean, it could go into Smithsonian or the Historical Society, eventually. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Roman. It's just my thoughts on it. Thank you, Mr. Drake. Anything additional, Mr. Drake?
No, I'm good.
All good.
Mr. President.
Mayor.
I'd like to comment a little bit on that.
Please.
Is, is, right, we have a budget. We have to live within the amount of money we, we bring in, and we present that every year. And this council, as well as administration, makes proposals for different things, and you folks vote on it. I mentioned last week, we put nearly $3 million in a concession stand, a press box, and pickleball courts, which could have been put in a police station. It was choices that were made. So, there's, there's only, when we only have so much money to go around, we either raise taxes or, or some, we have to raise the revenues to, to do the streets, the pickleball courts, the concession stand, and the police station, and any other proposals that come around, or we invest in things that could bring new revenue into the city, which we did do, and you were, you folks were a part of that. We fought opposition when we tried to go and expand our industrial park, but we got there. And what we have to do is see that that gets through by different zoning things that are going to come up, but I believe we are, we are 99% of the way there for industrial development with prospects beyond that. And those are things that will raise the revenue of spendable money in the general fund by about 35% of what we currently have. So, we'll be able to do some things like that. So, until then, we got to prioritize what we have in the budget and make the choices, and, and we have done that throughout each calendar year when you guys approve a budget, and then, and then we have to live with those decisions. But we have created latitude now where our industrial projects and investments, I would more like say, are getting ready to pay off, and they're not only going to pay off, they're paying off in a big way. And we won't be probably arguing about these type of things because we'll be able to pay $10 million worth of roads in a calendar year in the near future. So, we have to be patient and still budget our revenues that come in and, and make the best of it. We, none of us are completely happy with some of the choices, but we work together, and year after year, some of us get the things we want done, and some of us might have to wait till the next year. But I know every city goes through this. There's only so many dollars to go around, and you try to make the best use of what you got and cover all the bases.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, anything additional on item 111? Hearing none, I will assign item 111 as ordinance 111 of 2025 and ask Ms. Snyder to read it into the record.
Accepting the bid of Quinn Concrete Construction Incorporated, PO Box 865, Toledo, Ohio, for furnishing labor materials and equipment for the 2025 sidewalk project and miscellaneous concrete work, authorizing the mayor, director of public service and finance director to enter into a contract with said contractor and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Counsel.
Mr. President.
Ms. Pauloff.
I move for passage of ordinance 111 of 2025 as an emergency measure.
Thank you, Ms. Pauloff.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Walensak. Thank you, Mr. Walensak. We have a motion by Mrs. Pauloff, seconded by Mr. Walensak for ordinance 111 of 2025. Ms. Snyder, will you please take a roll call vote of council?
Mrs. Pauloff?
Yes.
Mr. Walensak?
Yes.
Mrs. Ackerman?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Nay.
Mr. Horniak?
I will abstain.
Mr. Slender?
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel. Ordinance 111 of 2025 does pass with a vote of four yays and one nay. However, it does fail to meet the five required votes for an emergency, so it will pass as a regular measure. Moving on to item 112 of 2025, presented by Mayor Mike Seferian and Finance Director Nick Roman. Mr. Roman?
Mr. President, if I could speak on the next two ordinances, they're both very similar.
Please do.
So, these two ordinances would authorize us to instruct the Toledo Edison to install light poles in two different neighborhoods that are being developed. There would be seven in Bay Meadows Estates, Platteau, and then there'd be three in the Graham Village, Platteau. In both these situations, the streetlight installation is paid by, paid by the developers, so they, we invoice them, and the money comes in to have these paid, and then on a going-forward basis, the operating costs are paid for through assessments by the property owners. If there's any questions on them, please let me know.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Roman. Counsel, we'll take them together for questions. Any questions on item 112 or 113? Yep. Hearing none. Mr. Graham, you deferred to be here for item 113. Anything to say on the measures? Thank you. Counsel, last chance, any questions for 112? Hearing none, I will assign item 112 of 2025 as ordinance 112 of 2025 and ask Ms. Snyder to read it into the record.
Authorizing the Toledo Edison Company to install 750-watt LED colonial-style lights on a 20-foot fiberglass poles with wire located in Bay Meadows Estates, Platteau, providing for the assessment to benefited property owners and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Counsel.
Mr. President.
Ms. Pauloff.
I move for passage of item 112, 2025, as an emergency measure.
Thank you, Ms. Pauloff.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Drake. Thank you, Mr. Drake. We have a motion by Mrs. Pauloff, seconded by Mr. Drake for ordinance 112 of 2025. Ms. Snyder, will you please take a roll call vote of council?
Mrs. Pauloff?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yay.
Mrs. Ackerman?
Yes.
Mr. Horniak?
Yes.
Mr. Slender?
Yes.
Mr. Walensak?
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel. Ordinance 112 of 2025 does pass with a vote of six yays and zero nays. Moving on to item 113, Counsel, are any questions specific to 113? Hearing none, I will assign item 113 of 2025 as ordinance 113 of 2025 and ask Ms. Snyder to read it into the record.
Authorizing the Toledo Edison Company to install 350-watt LED colonial-style lights on 20-foot fiberglass poles with number two duplex cable located in Graham Village, Platteau, providing for the assessment to benefited property owners and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Counsel.
Mr. President.
Ms. Pauloff.
I move for passage of ordinance 113 of 2025 as an emergency measure.
Thank you, Ms. Pauloff.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Drake. Thank you, Mr. Drake. We have a motion by Mrs. Pauloff, seconded by Mr. Drake for ordinance 113 of 2025. Ms. Snyder, will you please take a roll call vote of council?
Mrs. Pauloff?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yay.
Mrs. Ackerman?
Yes.
Mr. Horniak?
Yes.
Mr. Slender?
Yes.
Mr. Walensak?
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel.[1631.38] Ordinance 113 of 2025 does pass with a vote of six yays and zero nays. Moving on to the last agenda item presented by Mayor Michael Seferian and Law Director Melissa Purpora, item 114, Ms. Purpora?
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance is needed to amend section 549.22 of the Oregon Municipal Code that deals with fireworks. The law sets forth the fireworks when they're permitted to be displayed. This ordinance would, um, amend one section of it is specifically D2J, which is the last page of your exhibit. And it would be amended to state that any additional day that the city chooses to celebrate an event with fireworks from 4:00 PM to 1:00 AM. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Purpora, counsel. Hearing no questions, I will assign item 114 of 2025 as ordinance 114 of 2025 and ask Ms. Snyder to read it into the record.
Amending section 549.22 of the codified ordinances of the City of Oregon entitled "Fireworks and Declaring an Emergency."
Thank you, Ms. Snyder, counsel.
Mr. President.
Ms., oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I was just wondering, so then in, so we expect the public to only be able to observe, um, Independence Day on the 3rd, 4th, and 5th days of July, but the City of Oregon can choose to recognize Independence Day any day it pleases?
Thank you, Ms. Ackerman.
Mr. President, Ms. Ackerman.
Ms. Purpora.
It's not specific to Independence Day. This is any day that the, uh, city chooses to celebrate. Uh, like, for example, we could do it on Honey Fest if we chose to do fireworks. Um, if we, if the city chooses to do it that day, any additional individual that would choose to set out fireworks that day would be permitted to do so. So it's not just on, it's not just for Independence Day. It's any day that the city would choose to celebrate with fireworks.
Oh, I see. So it would be those days, the A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, and then J being would include, um, the citizens would be allowed to observe Independence Day on whatever day that the city is?
Yes, that is correct. So.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that because it's like 3rd, 4th, and 5th days of July. So it's almost like they'll get several Independence Days. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you, Ms. Ackerman. Counsel, any additional questions on 114? Hearing none, I will assign 114 as ordinance 114 of 2025. We've already read. We've read, so we need a motion and second. Sorry.
Mr. President.
Ms. Pauloff.
I move for passage of ordinance 114 of 2025 as an emergency measure.
Thank you, Ms. Pauloff.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Walensak. Thank you, Mr. Walensak. We have a motion by Mrs. Pauloff, seconded by Mr. Walensak for ordinance 114 of 2025. Ms. Snyder, will you please take a roll call vote of counsel?
Mrs. Pauloff?
Yes.
Mr. Walensak?
Yes.
Mrs. Ackerman?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
No.
Mr. Horniac?
Yes.
Mr. Sander?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Ordinance 114 of 2025 does pass with a vote of five yays and one nay, meaning the five vote requirement. It does pass as an emergency measure. Counsel, that is all the agenda items we have this evening, so we'll move on to the mayor's report. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. And counsel, you know, we had that committee meeting, uh, last Wednes, excuse me, Wednesday to speak about, um, possibilities for Boomfest, and it came up about a headliner and the cost of a headliner and the cost and the ability to raise revenues in timely fashion. And after digesting all that went on on Wednesday, I felt it was, um, in the best interest of not only the city, but, um, for the event to actually cancel the headliner and, uh, proceed with the, the bands we have, gear them up, and I believe we can pull off something very spectacular on, uh, that, uh, same day. Everything else is aligned up and, uh, it will allow us to feature more, uh, kid events. And, uh, all in all, I think we can pull off, uh, just, uh, still a very, uh, pleasing event and something everybody will be proud of. Um, one of the things that will go with that is I'll be working with, uh, Nick Roman to, to, um, come to a conclusion about what we believe we can accurately raise in revenues and coming before council in two weeks, uh, council meeting to raise the appropriations to that number so that we can achieve all the events that are there. And, uh, we want to go to each of the, the folks that chose to be a sponsor and secure those funds so that, um, when we come to, to you with a, um, proposal for raising the appropriations, we are, um, we've been convinced that we will have no problem raising that money. And, uh, we can pull off the event and, uh, especially to Nick's, uh, level of, of comfort, uh, which I believe, um, will be a number, um, 90, $95,000, uh, where we are currently at. And that would even, um, counting alcohol proceeds and food truck proceeds, uh, count very little of that so that we believe, believe we have secured that many dollars. So the, I believe we can pull that event off and, uh, everybody will be happy. That's what I believe I absorbed from that Wednesday meeting, and I think we can achieve that. Um, after that, I do have, uh, some correspondence for appointments, uh, a resignation, and I would like to proceed with that. First, from the fire department, I ask counsel's concurrence in the resignation of Chris Nelson effective June 16th, 2025.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel.
Mr. President.
Ms. Pauloff.
I move to concur with the mayor's acceptance of the resignation of Chris Nelson from the Fire Department effective June 16th.
Thank you, Ms. Pauloff.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sander. Thank you, Mr. Sander. We have a motion by Ms. Pauloff, seconded by Mr. Sander to concur with the mayor's acceptance of the resignation. Counsel, is there any objection? Hearing none, mayor, counsel concurs with the acceptance of that resignation.
And, and next from, uh, Streets Department and, uh, seasonal appointments, I'd ask counsel's concurrence, and these two appointments would be effective June 24th, 2025. Um, to utility worker two, classification five, uh, which is step one, 1875 an hour for both of these individuals. First is Spencer, 40er of, uh, 5624 Eagles Landing and Luke Hardy of 6610 South Lake Shore Road. Um, once again, the step one, 1875 an hour, effective date, June 24th, 2025.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel.
Mr. President.
Mr. Walensak.
Mr. President, I move to concur with the mayor and the appointment of Spencer 48 and Luke Hardy.
Thank you, Mr. Walensak.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sander. Thank you, Mr. Sander. We have a motion by Mr. Walensak, seconded by Mr. Sander to accept the appointment of Spencer 48 and Luke Hardy. Counsel, are there any objections? Hearing none, mayor, counsel concurs with these appointments.
Uh, thank you, counsel. And next from the Police Department, and these are both, uh, promotions to the position of sergeant. And I'll start with, uh, Alex Thomason, um, and the effective date would be June 30th, 2025. He'll be, he'll be placed in step one of the FOP, um, pay salary of $91,490.36, which is an hourly rate of $43.98.57. And I would ask counsel's concurrence, once again, in the promotion of, uh, to, of Alex Thomason to sergeant.
You're taking one at a time. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Counsel.
Mr. President.
Ms. Pauloff.
I move to concur with the mayor's promotion of Patrolman Alex Thomason to Police Sergeant, um, effective June 30th.
Thank you, Ms. Pauloff.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Drake. Thank you, Mr. Drake. Counsel, we have a motion by Mrs. Pauloff, seconded by Mr. Drake to concur with the mayor's appointment of Alex Thomason. Are there any objections? Hearing none, mayor, counsel concurs with the appointment of Alex Thomason. Mayor?
Um, and, and now, um, another promotion to sergeant, and that would be of Benjamin Barassi to the position of sergeant effective June 30th, 2025. Also, step one, uh, FOP pay rate, 91,490.36, which is an hourly rate, once again, of And, uh, once again, it would be effective June 30th, 2025.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel.
Mr. President.
Mr. Walensak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I make a motion to concur with the mayor on the promotion of Benjamin Barassi to, from patrolman to police sergeant.
Thank you, Mr. Walensak.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Drake. Thank you, Mr. Drake. Motion by Mr. Walensak, seconded by Mr. Drake to accept the promotion of Benjamin Barassi, um, in the Police Department. Are there any objections? Hearing none, mayor, counsel concurs with your appointment of Benjamin Barassi to the police, uh, to the role of sergeant.
And I don't know if you folks realize it, but Ben and Alex are sitting right there. To make it official, they have to come up and speak for about 15, 20 minutes to explain why they like that position, or, or they could just say, "Thank you," and. Yeah. Yeah.
Gentlemen, thank you. Congratulations on the promotion.
And with that, I would conclude my report for now.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Mazur.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, tomorrow is the groundbreaking ceremony for the apartment complex at, uh, the town center. That's at 11:00 AM. Uh, we'll meet on the, uh, north side of the property, so near the roundabout. Um, and then, uh, I want to credit, um, Councilman Drake for this, but, uh, you know, he brought up a good question that I think we need to take a look into at the rec. But, uh, the, you know, that's, it's hot outside, we have baseball tonight. Um, you can see the parking lot is filled up. It was a little bit, too little, too late at the time, but, um, you know, I'd, I'd like to look into, uh, setting up a policy where if, uh, you know, the heat index on a certain day hits a certain point, that the games automatically get canceled rather than put it in the hands of the, the coaches and the parents to make decisions because that's, that's getting a lot of people involved rather than just kind of setting a policy in place so that, you know, we just want to keep everybody safe. And yeah, I know it's inconvenient to reschedule games and, and everything else, and it, it does take a little effort to do that, but, um, just in the best interest of everybody, I think it's a good idea that we, we take a look into that policy. So I just wanted to bring that up and mention that, and that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mazur. Ms. Purpora?
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Purpora. Mr. Roman.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. Ms. Pauloff.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Pauloff, Ms. Mr. Walensak.
I have no report this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Walensak, Ms. Ackerman.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Mazur and I spoke, uh, oh, a, a couple of times about this. Uh, some cities, when they have the vote, they stagger or, or rotate the voting order and not always do it alphabetically. And so I would like to know if we can enter into, like, discussion, not necessarily at this moment, but, um, soon, and I don't know that that falls in a committee, so not sure how to, how to approach that. But, um, you know, that way we all share in that being the, the, you know, the roulette of voting and how that, how your vote impacts. So, um, I'm, my last names always start with an A, so I always had to give the report first. So I guess I, you know, do your, do your book report and whatever. But I just, I know some, some cities, I've spoken to council people in a lot of different areas, and they, they rotate it. So you may have your first, you, someone makes the motion, someone seconds it, and then you begin, you know, with, and I believe, Joel, you said it, it's, it was, it's each meeting, not each vote. So could we consider something like that moving forward?
Thank you, Ms. Ackerman. Um, because I'm sitting in the seat temporarily this evening as pro tem, I don't think that's my place. That, uh, is something that can and should be brought to the president of council, uh, for consideration. I, you know, whoever makes the motion votes first, whoever seconds the motion votes second, that's an automatic and that's non-debatable. As far as the order for the rest of it, um, Mr. Walensak probably is used to being at the tail end of those things. So. Uh, again, I think that can be brought to Mr. Reeves, you know, um, you know, if, if that's a point of contention or something you'd like to see changed, I think it's a discussion with the president of council, uh, who ultimately has the charge of running the meetings and can set something like that if he sees it fit.
We wouldn't, it wouldn't require a vote?
Uh, no.
By members? He could just dictate the order that?
The council can't. I mean, certainly, I, I would assume, and again, I don't want to put words into Mr. Reeves', uh, mouth. He is the duly elected president, uh, at this time, and I think that warrants his discussion on that. I think he would probably have a conversation with each of us, how we felt, if we had an issue with that or not. Um, and then I would guess it would be almost a random rotating order of, okay, pick a chair, one, two, three, four, down the way. I, I'm sure there's some very fair way that that could be done.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ackerman.
I was gonna say, years ago, uh, the person who made the second, it went alphabetical after them, uh, so whoever made the second did change their order, as long as it was a different person in each event. Uh, I, we, we did it for years.
That'd keep you on your toes, wouldn't it?
I, I don't exactly know when it changed from that. I just remember back in the eighties and nineties, that's the way we did it.
Well, as a roll call vote, by definition, typically a roll call, roll call is going to follow an alphabetic format. I mean, that's.
Yeah, it did. It went, it went alphabetical.
Definition of the word.
It went alphabetical after that person.
Yeah.
And started over, whatever.
I think Ms. Snyder is protesting a little bit to that. But I think we could set an order.
And the, and the clerk had a cheat sheet that, that had all the options there, and then, then they just went through it.
I was gonna say, for those who aren't quite familiar with that, there is a cheat sheet. So as Ms. Snyder records the vote, she's indicating each member's vote on that specific item. Um, so it is prepared ahead of time, and it could be, hey, so you're first this time, you're first next time. But again, I will leave that to Mr. Reeves and his discretion as president. That's why I believe where that conversation best resides.
Sure. Um, not from my senior committee, but I've had repeated requests for, uh, the sidewalks to be completed on Dustin Road. There, there's some citizens that they would like to walk it, and since it is the town center, so, so to speak, um, it's very, if you look at it aerial, it's very haphazard and where it starts and stops and how incomplete it is. So, uh, I don't know if that, and that may be on your, on your schedule in coming days, Mr. Roman?
Go ahead, Mr..
Mr. President, Ms. Ackerman. Um, so we did receive a grant to put in a bike path that will go from the light at Walmart on Navarre, go past Dairy Depot, um, go through Cross Schmidlin and go on the Dustin Road Paper Street, okay, north of Warden, and then it'll be a continuous path all the way to Oregon Town Center. Now, we get into an area on Dustin where there are no sidewalks, and you'll, you'll have this path, okay? And then there's other areas where the existing sidewalk that we're trying to widen is out of the right way. And we've laid out a design where it could actually go in the road. So where you have the boulevard, on the south side of the boulevard, it'll go from a two-lane to a one-lane road, but with the path, and it creates, uh, it'll, it'll, it won't do any, uh, effect on traffic flow because Dustin's a one-lane road in destruction with the turn lane. But, um, it'll be a continuous path from our bike network all the way to town center.
So it'd be a walking path in the street?
Yes, just for us, just for a small section where the boulevard is, yes. But it'll be, it'll be safe, you know? But, um, it is, just because we have, we didn't, we didn't have the right of way, and it was the easiest, basically the, the best way to do it. Um, but it will be a continuous path, uh, and so it will take care of that. So, um, I believe our, our grant is available in '26 to do that work, and we're still looking for other grant money, so. Anyways, yeah, that, that is in our works, so.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Ms. Ackerman. Anything additional?
No, sir.
No. If I may to, um, if anybody knows the area of Broadway that they've been working on the roads for quite some time, um, I would just ask that we consider to maybe not do it in that center because they put the bike path literally in between two lanes of traffic, right by Western. And I drove through there today. It's the first it's really been open in a while, and I thought, oh my goodness, that looks a little suspect.
Mr. Horniac?
Yeah.
Mr. President, um, the, and if you, if you're familiar with Tammanyany Trail, 41, it's that way through a good portion of it.
Through there as well.
So you're on your bike, and then all of a sudden, there's lanes on both sides of you, and you're out in an intersection, and it's, yeah, it's a little bit, uh, nerve-wracking.
We, we trust your group's efforts.
And actually, it brings back, um, coy and star, you know, because to make a, if you're on a bike, to make a right turn, you have to cross the turn lane. And I remember Mr. Reeves had, you know, just gave me a lot of grief on that. But it does work, you know? It is safe, it is proper, but yeah, I, I get it. I understand it.
Appreciate that. Oh, boy, let's not go there tonight. Thank you, Ms. Ackerman. Mr. Sander.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things here. One, with next year being the two-hundred-and-fiftieth, and with everybody probably going to be out there trying to get things and setting up things for Independence Day, I would like to recommend or request, I guess, can we get a committee together, because I have had some citizens also talk to me, one right out here, who's out there right now, but is interested in being part of a committee to be able to do that, just to get things going, and so that we make sure that we do it in a timely fashion. And then the other thing alongside of that, I know Councilwoman Pauloff had mentioned last week on Wednesday, the committee meeting there about, about a bet of all the bands, and I, personally, I absolutely love it. I think it is a fantastic idea. I've had, I've talked to at least a good handle of people who also have said the same thing, they really like that idea, and I would love to see us for our two-hundred-and-fiftieth, you know, make that, make that happen. I would love to see it, so if we can do that, I think that would be awesome. So thank you for the idea, Councilwoman Pauloff.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Sander. Mr. Drake.
Yeah, nothing from my committee. I agree with Mrs. Baker, and I know we had this discussion a few weeks ago, I brought up about complaint-driven, and I know Joel, he had told me that building and zoning was real busy and this, that, and the other, and hopefully, you know, and I'm not saying building and zoning isn't doing their job, but, you know, Mrs. Baker's right, you drive by these houses, and I kind of came to a conclusion, this is just my guess, and I can't prove it, and I don't believe anybody up here would do anything like that, but my thing is that it almost seems like, depending on where you live, if you live in an older neighborhood like mine, it's like, oh, well, you know, you got a guy down the street, his yard doesn't look that great, but I noticed in the, in the newer neighborhoods, which are more money, whatever, you know, I'm just a big believer, I don't care if you live in a dollar house or a billion-dollar house, shouldn't matter where you live, how much things are enforced, just because this neighborhood cuts their grass more than this neighborhood, you know, I just hope that each neighborhood, depending on where you live, I know some are prettier than others, but, you know, I just hope that isn't a deterrent on which ones we, we're gonna make do, and the other ones, like, eh, who cares? That's just my thought. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Drake. Mr. Mazur.
Hey, and I want to address that, because I think that's, that's a good point, and, you know, it does take time, I know it, it's the process that we go through, the legal process of giving somebody notice and then getting it to the point where it's, where it's actually cut, you know, declaring it a nuisance and everything else, it can be a long process, but longer than what we'd like. But yes, we are still doing the blitz, the tall grass blitz. I know there was some discussion about, you know, getting notice out and not getting notice out, and how do we get notice out, but in my opinion is that any notice that we give out, if people aren't cutting their grass now, they're not gonna, why spend the money or the time and the effort in notices when people are already not cutting their grass, they're already not doing what they're supposed to be doing? So I know the building inspection is out, they are, they are actively seeking some of these locations to get them cut, so to, I was, I did have that on my notes to bring up, but I thought, well, I'll just leave that one alone, but I'm glad you brought it up, because to that point that, you know, we, this is a first of its kind, that we haven't done this here, I know in other places might do this, but it's always been complaint-driven, and just because that's the way we've always done it, doesn't make it right. So I think that, having that, addressing it this way and doing some type of, you know, more proactive effort in addressing some of these homes, I know I've driven some of the neighborhoods, I didn't see a whole lot of them, but, I mean, I know some of them are out there, some of them are in my neighborhood, I brought that up at the last meeting, but, you know, and I get it, that, you know, some people don't like to call in on their neighbors, because, you know, you gotta live with your neighbors, but we are actively doing it, we're looking at doing things a little differently than we have in the past to try to address some of these concerns, and then, you know, if all goes well, like to keep it in something in practice so that we don't get behind on the grass mowing in the future.
Mr. Mazur, may I ask you a question, please? A perfect example of why you should send a mailed notice to a landowner is the five acres across the road from us, it's recently been purchased by a young family that does not live right here, and my husband actually went out and bush-hogged it because the thistles were so tall, and, but they just don't know, they just don't know, and they don't, because they don't have a driveway even or anything over there, you know, but they should be made aware of, you know, those type of expectations, I guess, you know, that it was sitting there from the previous owner for quite some time, and my husband's mowed it over the years without benefit of, you know, being, getting paid for it, but, anyway, so it, just, he's a, he's a good example, he and his family, they're just young, and they, I'd hate to see him, you know, penalized and, you know, arbitrarily, just because, but you should know better, you know, when he, he doesn't know because he doesn't live here, and, and since it is, you know, I don't know, it would be a courtesy on our part, I think, just to consider that. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Ackerman. Mr. Drake, anything further?
Um, no, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. And I have nothing from my standing committee. We did reserve a place on the agenda for further business before council, being Boomfest. I think the mayor gave us an update today that Boomfest is proceeding, so I think we can say that loud and clear for the folks that are still asking, yes, it is happening. We will have a lineup of very good music activities and events going on for that specific day. Counsel, is there anything additional for Boomfest since we have it on the agenda today?
Not Boomfest, but I have one thing, but I'll let you finish up with Boomfest there.
Okay. Dunn's?
At Dunn's Chevy.
Yeah. Yeah. Back off the road. Anything? Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Sander.
Thank you, Mr. President. Also, with, just with, going back to the heat that we're talking about right now, also, I don't know if I, maybe I missed it, I could have missed it, but if there's cooling stations out there that we know of, can we, have we put that on our page at our, at all, or website, or?
You're talking about out back, or you're talking about for?
Just in general, like if there's other, you know, I know, like, the senior center is one, and the library is one, I don't know if there's others, if any churches are doing it at all, but if we know of any, just to put it out there as a kind of FYI for people, because, what's that?
No, it's a big flag out front.
Oh, yeah.
There you go. But just.
Flash bed out back.
Yes, right. Yep. So just things like that, just to kind of give a heads up, so people, if they're, they can go there and know that they have a list of where they can go to or have neighbors go to or what have you.
I'd say it's a fair request, if we have those public facilities that are cooling areas, if we somehow indicate that either through our websites or Facebook pages, just to let those that may not have air conditioning or need some relief from the heat know where those places are, I think that's a great point. With that, and all things before us, I do want to say thank you to the folks from the Oregon Community Theater, always fun to have someone come out and share a song with us, and appreciate them being here tonight. With that, I would seek a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President.
Ms. Pauloff.
Still move.
Thank you, Ms. Pauloff.